I want to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled meeting of Birmingham City Council, September 1st, 2020. We're going to have our prayer by Counselor Hoyt and Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor O'Quinn. If everyone could please stand this morning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I do apologize for not having on my jacket. I left it. I guess I'm getting old. But anyway, I want to share scripture with you and then invoke the presence of God. And this is Psalms 37. It says, "Do not fret because of evil men, nor be envious of those who do wrong; for like the grass they will soon wither, like the green plants they will soon die away. Trust in the Lord and do good; dwell in the land and enjoy, say pastors. Delight yourself in the Lord, and he will give you the desires of your heart. Commit your ways to the Lord; trust in him, and he will do this: he will make your righteousness shine like the dawn, and the justice of your cause like a noonday sun. Be still before the Lord, and wait patiently for him; and do not fret when men succeed in their ways, and when they carry them out their wicked schemes." When they carry out their wicked schemes, it says, verse 8 says, "Refrain from anger, and turn from wrath, and do not fret; it leads only to evil." Let us bow his eternal God, our Father God, we thank you this day. God, we come this morning giving praise for you are God all by yourself. You are one who is omnipotent in power, omniscient in knowing, omnipresent in being. And God, so we rely on you. Whatever the upheavals may be around this country with systemic racism and things of that nature, God, we ask that you remove it, God. Remove the barriers, God, and give us hope again, God. All we have to do is to trust in you. And that's what you've asked us to do. And so, God, we come this morning, not only as a council and mayor and city, but we come as a state, as a nation, Lord, to say that we trust in you. We know that everything is in your hands. God, we thank you for those workers who make this city a better place each and every day. God, we thank you for those department heads. We thank you for the mayor and his leadership. We thank you for President Parker and President Protem Alexander, Lord. We thank you for all the counselors as they deliberate each and every day on behalf of the people. God, give us a spirit of unity. Give us a spirit that empowers and that, God, we would do what's right by your people. God, we ask all of these blessings in your name, and we give you praise and glory this day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Good morning, Mr. Court.
Good morning, sir. All right, Council President Protem Alexander.
President.
Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Hoyt.
President.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
President.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. All right, Councilmember Hillier.
President.
Oh, President Parker, my apologies, sir. Last but not least.
We do have a couple of vacancies. With the Birmingham Planning Commission, we have Meshonda Taylor, Brian Ogun, Patty Pickleton. All the terms expire October the 6th, 2020. They're six-year terms, and they're under the Planning and Zoning Committee. And then you have Park and Rec vacancy with Larry Cockrell. The term expires October the 8th, 2020. It is a four-year term, and it is under the Park and Recreation Committee.
Thank you. All right, the minutes are not ready, March 10th, 2020 through August 25th, 2020. So we have computers now, so we're good. So, morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Morning, Mr. President, and good morning to the entire council. A couple of brief notes. One is, as we begin September, I am happy to state that we made a dent in the weed abatement, as well as horticulture slash grass cutting for the month of August versus June and July due to the heavy amount of rain. I've shared it with this body, so what I'm about to say is not new to you, but it will be new to the public. As our teams were out here getting ready to engage in horticulture, weed abatement, and cutting grass, we've noticed a significant amount of, I guess, trash and other refuse needing to be picked up before we can engage. So I just want to share with the public that pride still matters in 2020 where you live. Pride still matters in your own neighborhood. Pride still matters in your own street. Pride still matters in your own block. And when you're headed home from work or from an event or from school, whatever it is, it would do all of us some good, but especially you in your own neighborhood, that you not roll your window down at the exit and throw whatever it is out of your car to the, off the exit at the light. That when you walk to the convenience store or gas station or grocery store or whatever convenience store it is, then your path on your way back, if you finish whatever you purchased, that you don't throw it on the ground. Because it's, we as an administration and then as council are going to continue to do everything we can to keep this city clean, but we need our residents to participate in that as well. And you can't, you can't litter where you live, or you shouldn't litter where you live, because you have to take pride in where you live. So we need your help in keeping our city clean. The second note I'll make, Mr. President, and I'll yield the floor back to you, is I'm happy to see you as President, Crystal Smitherman, several of your colleagues acknowledge the importance of where we are 30 days out with the census count. I see several people in the audience, I imagine will speak to that today as well. I just want to give a brief note. The state has a way to go, the city of Birmingham does as well. We're only at 53%. That means half. This is not going to increase by social media. This is not going to increase with radio spots. This is not going to increase with TV. I do believe it will increase with these following two things, or three things, word of mouth, getting out into the streets, as well as a request I have to anybody that's a neighbor. Go knock on your own neighbor's door and ask them have they filled out the census. This is a person you already trust. This is a person you already know. This is a person who lives next to you all the time. And so it's not necessarily a stranger coming to your door asking you to fill out something that will be beneficial to the city and the state. So the short version is, as any resident of the city of Birmingham, my request to you, direct appeal to you is if you've already filled out your census, please take the time over the next week or two to take a few seconds, knock on your own neighbor's door to the left and the right, and ask them have they filled out their census. And if they haven't, please encourage them to. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we did invite census officials here to take part in our, to give us an update. But Counselor Smitherman, if you want to kind of speak to that and then go into the presentation. Good morning.
Thank you, President Parker. So the Census Committee consists of myself, Council Williams, and President Parker. We've had various partnerships with different groups. The U-Serve, which is a nonprofit here, they have a Young Professionals Advisory Board, which I am a part of. They did a census phone banking a couple of weeks, and they got some of the students to do it as well. I went out with some members from the mayor's office. Actually, we were at Elaton Village. We started, but it started raining. But we'll be out there at 2:30. I know President Parker had some celebrities to come out. Well, it started raining on that same day, too, to knock on doors. And Counselor O'Quinn's in my districts as well. We've been doing mailers. We've been doing everything that we can, but at this point, we still need help from everybody. They're already talking about, the census deadline hasn't even happened, and they're already talking about taking seats away from our state. And right now, in the climate of our country, we don't need less representation right now. We need as much representation as we can, especially during this pandemic. So I'm not sure who is here from the census, but if they would like to come up here and just speak to what are the next steps for it, what can we do, what can the constituents do to make sure that we get to at least 85% by September?
Good morning, Ms. Singleton. Come on up. Good morning. How you doing? You can come right on up. Good morning, Mrs. Singleton. Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good seeing you.
Good morning. How you doing?
I'm fine. I was assigned, really, I asked for to be over the Complete Count Committee for the county. And we were assigned certain areas to go into and certain populations. And we were assigned the hard to count. And that population is Latinos and African Americans. Black men and black children are the ones that's 80% under counted. I think it's time for us to realize the real deal with this. We have to go into our communities ourselves. We cannot do whatever is necessary for us to get these people counted. And the understanding on what the census is, is not taught in our public schools, but in the urban schools, they teach it early, very early, because my grandbaby is six, and she know what the census is. And she go to a urban school. So that's why I know where it's being taught at and where it's not being taught at. So we are 30 days away. We've got to do something about it. Now we have public housing calling each resident, and we're going to be out at the location. We've got a food truck following us. We have social media following us. And we have our shrink list. We have our gift cards where they can purchase food. We are giving away groceries, book bags, you name it. But it's just that critical. And I know we look at these political seats, yes, we do need them. But the resources that the census bring in, I don't really know whether we really realize that. There's no way the tax dollars can pay for paved the roads in Jefferson County, period, without federal assistance. There's no way for that to happen. So we got to make sure that we are reaching out. And the campaign that we had, it's a lot of things that we can do that we couldn't do 10 years ago, because we're in just in that bad a shape. And that's even given incentives for people to actually come out, sending out a text blast when you on a location and the census giving you the map of exactly where it's being under counted at. Just if you in the middle of, they gonna give you round the area, this area is 30, only have 39% of the people counted. So we are going into that area. We're bringing the food truck. We are bringing the radio stations. We're sending out a text into that area. We are letting them know what we have, and we need y'all help. We need for the, our city councils to come out with us and actually do this. And it's not going to take a whole lot of knocking, but we need your presence there.
Let me just respond, Counselor, Commissioner Tyson, and Ms. Singleton, you can come on up. We've been engaged in the process as well. I know you've been hearing our radio spots or TV ads. They're going to continue through September 30th. I think that makes a difference. And we're going to do more of it. We're going to double down on it to do more engagement. We're also going to hit the streets as well. And so I don't want to get into the announcements, but we're going to get started. We've been doing stuff. We're going to double down and do more stuff in the streets. So Commissioner Tyson, yes, ma'am, we will be all out, everybody working together, all of us knocking on doors and bringing awareness to making sure that by September 30th, everyone within the city of Birmingham, or really within the state of Alabama, fully participates in the Census 2020. Morning, Ms. Singleton. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council. And good morning to all the counselors, all the dices this morning. I want to take this time. I'm Charlotte Singleton. I am Charlotte Singleton. I am the Partnership Coordinator for the State of Alabama with the U.S. Census Bureau. And we are on that 30-day countdown. And we need your help to encourage and motivate the residents that live in the city of Birmingham to complete their census. And where we are now, on August 11th, census workers started going door to door, asking people to complete their questionnaire and engaging them in the questionnaire interviews. That mean they are taking the questionnaire and they are asking people that answer the door, the questions on the questionnaire. We need everyone to cooperate. We need everyone to participate. We need everyone to count everyone residing in that household as of April the 1st. We know with the pandemic, things have been delayed, but we engaged in starting to count on March the 12th of 2020. And that was the beginning of our online push to get people to go to the internet to complete the questionnaire online during our self-response. That means people can respond online, they can respond by an 800 number, and they also, at the time, in March 12th, receiving questionnaires through their mailbox, was able to complete the questionnaire and mail it back. We will have one last mailing of the questionnaires that will go out in the next couple of weeks. Those questionnaires will go to people who have not responded. So we don't know exactly which residents and households that it will reach. But if you look at some of the response rates in our city here, you'll find that some census tracks rate is as low as less than 10% of the households that have responded, and then others as high as 70%. So there's a large margin there from 10% in census tract in around the UAB area. And then some of the areas that reach, some of the inner-city areas and just over the ridge of Birmingham, that ranks anywhere from 60 to 70%. But I want to say today, the city of Birmingham response rate, and this is just the self-response rate, is at 53.5%. And of each urban area within the state, Birmingham rates the lowest. Mobile, Montgomery, Hansel, all sit at 60% or higher. So we appeal to the residents, we need to get your businesses engaged. When a person goes into the convenience store, when they go into the laundromat, when they go into the grocery store, the message needs to be there. It is said through marketing, a person needs to touch, see, feel, and hear a message at least seven times before it starts to resonate, before they can internalize that to memory and then put that into action. So that is the level of effort that we are encouraging today. We will have census workers at the UAB football game on this Thursday. The census workers there will have a tent. They'll be putting, distributing flyers. They will also be able to, on the site, ask people to complete the questionnaire. And they will be there for a couple of hours during and after the game. So we want to encourage people while they're there to encourage their neighbors, their family, their friends to come out and be a part of that. But also, we have what we have mobile questionnaire centers. And we are looking to each council district and every nook and cranny and corner store in the city to allow us to create and set up these mobile questionnaire centers across the city. And just as we will do on Thursday, we will be able to send census workers out with either smartphone or iPad to engage the public to get them to complete the questionnaire. That is our commitment to get a complete and accurate count for the city of Birmingham and the state of Alabama. Right now, we are also engaged in counting our homeless across the city and across the country. There are a number of steps, and we have specially trained enumerators that are sensitive to that population and will encourage them to participate. And yes, homeless, just like any other person, can complete the questionnaire online. There is some training to go with that, and we are reaching out to some of the social service agencies that work with the homeless to prepare them and to engage them to help the homeless do so. So I wanted just to say today, again, our mission, our focus is to get a complete and accurate count for Birmingham. I don't have to tell you how it impacts your budget, your roads, your healthcare, your medical care, your Medicaid, your Section 8 housing, your CDBG program, your lunch program at your schools. And on this weekend, if you looked at the AL.com and it reported about the municipal budgets that are impacted during this pandemic and what that means. So everybody is shopping online. So the sales tax that used to be at the brick and mortar is now e-commerce. Those tax dollars goes to the state of Alabama, and then they are reallocated back to the city and the counties. In January, the state legislature reallocated a percentage of comeback to the city. But what's in the fine print of that legislation is that it's based on your population. So not only do you miss the opportunity of maybe losing federal dollars, your state dollars is also impacted. Gas tax dollars for road projects are also impacted. So those are the reasons why this is important. And remember that this count will live for Birmingham for 10 years. So every federal dollar, every state dollar will be based on that count for the next 10 years. We are here as the Census Bureau to assist you, to, you know, walk beside you. We will be conducting a blitz next week throughout the city and throughout, we have a Birmingham Census Office downtown, and we will be focusing on the Birmingham HCO area, which covers Birmingham and central Alabama from Tuscaloosa all the way to Gadsden. So we will have a blitz in the city next week. With that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah. Okay, let me just start off and let you know, we will be a part of that blitz. We've been in communications with Singleton, you're the team member. So we were all in. I'm just going to speak on behalf of us. We're all in. We have billions and billions of dollars at stake over the next 10 years. For Alabama, it's roughly $600 to $700 billion is at stake with a B over the next 10 years. And so I think this is a priority. It will continue to be a priority. And whatever we need to do from the council, and I know what the mayor will do, because it's in the city's best interest and every resident within the city of Birmingham's best interest. So we will be on board. We'll be at the UAB game with you and every other day through September 30th, bringing awareness to the importance of everyone participating in the Census 2020. So with that, Counselor Hillier, I know you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for that excellent report. And I can hear the urgency in your voice and what it would cost us if we don't do it. I've asked my staff to step out. I don't see them yet, but I'm sure they're on their way to speak with you. Tonight, we have our virtual town hall meeting. We have a very high number of attendance. I have 19 neighborhoods in my district. My leaders will be on that call tonight. I would love to have you or someone from your office to come on and speak about what you've talked about. Now, we start at 7:30. They'll give you all the information and how you get in. And we would look forward to working with you and expressing the urgency to get out. And we're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can be available.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. And one other thing, I don't know if any other speakers, and we will probably expand that more to us having a tele-town hall for all of the city of Birmingham and the council will host. We'll probably do it through telephone and through Zoom or WebEx. So we'll do it multiple ways. But we'll talk later today. But we're going to have a very expanded 30-day push. And so we're going to be there with you every, and also we reached out to a lot of the pastors. So we'll be lining those meetings up as well, those conference calls. So I would imagine next week, we'll probably have with the council, we'll host a tele-town hall with you, with the census officials. And like I said, we might have to do a combination. One might be tele-town hall, the other might be through Zoom or Facebook or whatever. So we'll get that working where all of us are doing it. Yes, sir. Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you, President Parker. I just wanted to mention one thing. My wife has actually been working as an numerator. And so I get daily, you know, kind of insight into what's going on. And I just want to encourage members of the community, when you see one of the census workers out walking around the neighborhood, trying to gather information, it is very helpful to them to actually go out and serve as what they call a proxy. So sometimes if they're, they can't find someone at the home, or they don't come to the door, they need a member of the community, a neighbor, or, you know, someone that lives nearby to just verify whether or not someone lives at that location. So you can be helpful, even if you've completed your census, you can be helpful to the census workers in helping verify whether or not someone lives at an address. So if you see them out in the community, just say hello and ask if they need any help. And, you know, that will help our response rate. Thank you.
I have a question for you, and you might not know the answer off the top of your head. So I completely understand. I should have asked in advance. But obviously, UAB being a large student population in the city of Birmingham, do we know what their response rate has been with those students?
The response rate is not divided based on a particular business or location. UAB is a college and education facility, so it is part of group quarters as part of the on-campus students and dormitories. However, the students that live off-campus in general housing is counted just like everyone else is. They are residents. So wherever they live in apartments or rental housing, they are counted and should complete their questionnaires just as all residents of the city.
So I guess my question is, you know, we had some conversations with UAB at the beginning of the census, and they said that they were doing everything possible to make sure that all of their students were filling out the census. I just didn't know if they had been able, or you guys have been able to track that specifically.
What we do in terms of group quarters, we know how many students are part of each dormitory room. So that data has been turned over in terms of the university. Again, but I will emphasize, and one of the census tracts that I cited that is as low as 10% is in the area of the university. So it is important. And it's not an area where a dormitory is located. I've looked at the map myself. I've researched most of the census tracts in the city of Birmingham. And that is not one tract that has a dormitory. So this is general housing. And we understand that the rental housing surrounding the university, people are transient. When the pandemic began in March, students were on spring break. They weren't allowed to come back to campus or to classes. So that's an important area, not only for Birmingham to engage and reach out to, but also to reach out to the university. The university is part of the state Complete Count Committee under the Education Subcommittee. So they do, are aware. They have a website. But again, we are counting people where they live as of April the 1st. So for those students who are returning back to the city for this semester, most times they go back to those same residents. So those are places, again, where we need to encourage people to pitch fate.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask, what times of the day and night, excuse me, what times of the day and night are these people going out? Because the UAB students like to party on their front porches, and we see And we see large quantities of these students all over each other on the front porches of their houses. Because, you know, if you go outside, you can't catch the coronavirus. So if y'all would just send some people to visit all those front porches where all that partying is going on, you could probably catch a lot of them all at the same time. But you'd have to be out on the weekends and in the evenings. And I didn't know when the census workers came out.
Census enumerators have a flexible schedule. They can work at any time that they are available to work. They do work all in the weekends and in the evenings. So during those times when you can most likely encounter a student, they are in the field.
Okay, well, they need to come on out.
Yes, we will remind everyone to practice. CDC says it's safe to conduct the census, it's safe to participate in the census, but you must wear your mask and you must practice social distancing.
And we'll see you at the game on Thursday, UAB's home opener at Thursday at 7 o'clock against Central Arkansas. So hopefully, we'll be able to catch a lot of them as they come to the game. So anyway, with that, also, I'm sorry, Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Then, you know, I appreciate you guys coming, don't want to too much echo some of the importance of what we all know the census represents, but wanted to thank you, Ms. Singleton, as well as Commissioner Tyson and President Parker, really championing, you know, this cause, and we all want to continue working together. But I really appreciate your energy that you bring to really any issue that you tackle. So let's continue to lock arms.
Yes, sir, it's all hands on deck, so we'll all be out there in the streets with everybody. All right, thank you all. We're going to go on to, Councilor Hillier, you have a couple of presentations. I know we're waiting on President Hendricks from the school board, but you go ahead, Councilor Hillier, with your two.
Very good, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hillier.
Okay, go right ahead.
President Hendricks, come on up from Birmingham School Board, I'm sorry. You doing okay? Yes, ma'am. And by the way, thank you, Ms. Singleton, for our grab bags. We have a lot of information that we're going to be putting out, and I know the school board and the school system, we're all going to partner together, a lot of the high school games too, so we can get out. So good morning, how you doing, President?
We want everybody to do their census. I heard you this morning on the radio, Council Alexander. Good afternoon, everyone. I will take my mask off so that I can be heard, though I usually don't do this, to echo Council Abbott. But we're okay. I am here today, I want to first say thank you to each and every one of you for allowing us to speak or allowing me to speak, but I'm absolutely not here on my professional capacity. I am a parent, I'm a 20-year citizen of Birmingham, I've been paying taxes, I vote every time. My child has been in Birmingham City Schools since kindergarten. Many of you all know my child. Many of you all have our students coming often here to give them praise and to give them accolades and to give them encouragement. You know our students, we have 22,000-plus students. The funding for the school system is critical. We just did our budget yesterday, and as you all know, not only in the city municipalities, the county, the state, everyone is going to have to make some cuts, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, we all are. And we understand that. There are millions of dollars that we're going to be losing and having to realize between ADM and some of the other tax revenue that we're not going to see or realize from the state level down. But for a city of this size with 22,000 students to decide to budget zero, zero, as a parent, I had to come. As a parent, I just had to come. Our children deserve more. You all want a world-class educational system, and I do too. And the city won't prosper if education's not strong. But it cannot be done with zero funding. If you all divide 22,000 students by the million dollars we received last year, it's $45 a student per year. It costs more than $50 a week for childcare. We must do more, and we must do better. Our children need us, the teachers and our staff need you, and they are Birmingham citizens. So we are invested, and we are invested and invest in this city. And we just simply must say that to decide to fund all of our children and their needs at zero funding is just not acceptable. Please, you all, I encourage you, please consider that a little deeply. Promising possible tax revenue is nice, but the children start school on September 8th. We can't wait for funding for possible tax revenue. So we look forward to meeting with you all, I think we've talked about that, having to get with you all going forward. The city, the school system wants to partner with Birmingham City. We understand you've got some hard decisions to make, and we want to partner with you. But to say that we need zero funding for 24, 22,000 students is just egregious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, real quick before I call on everybody. Last night, I know we had a conversation where we had representatives from the library board and some other community groups, and like we did with the library board and the park board, we want to invite you to, I mean, we can have a work session next Tuesday, next Wednesday. I don't know if that's, I don't know if you all have a board, but if we could do it.
We have a board meeting next Tuesday at 5:30, but we can still see if we can make something happen.
Okay, we could probably, yeah, perhaps we do it either on Wednesday. I know Wednesday, but we will, and we either do it here or at the Botanical Gardens or wherever we can social distance. But we will confirm if, let's shoot for next Wednesday, I know that's Wednesday's Thursday, but if we could make a special exception.
I moved mine to Thursday.
Okay, if we could just plan if next Wednesday, after 5:30, 6 o'clock, we could gather and have a work session. Like I said, we could do here, or probably Botanical Gardens might be enough space or possible. We could just plan on next Wednesday, even if that's okay with everybody, we can hear from, we'll invite the school board and the mayor and all the other groups, so.
Mr. President.
Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't leave.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, let me first thank you and congratulations, because I don't think I've had an opportunity to say that as the new president of the Board of Education. But I also want to thank you as a parent, one who has been engaged in your child's life and the children of our school system for a long time. And so I appreciate that. It is disheartening to say that we're going to cut monies going to our children, because I don't know where they do that in the United States of America. I don't care what, under what circumstances. You know, our children are, it is our future, okay? And so, but I want you to know, what we have before us now is what the mayor proposed to us. Now it is the council's budget. And if we do our homework, which I think we're going to do, that hopefully we could see a difference. But I also want to say this, not just show up at the meeting next week, but have some tangibles in terms of what we, what you all need, because that's what we need to know, because that's what's going to drive this process.
Sure.
And if you all have, you know, figured that out, whatever iteration that looks like, I'm certainly on board, because I won't participate in a budget that does not include our children. And I speak from my own experience, you know, last week I was accused of pandering children, what have you. But I've given our Birmingham City Schools over $70,000 to college-bound students for the last six years. That's, you know, things that I've raised to try to help our children. And we've done that consistently. And part of what the purpose was created as a means of trying to meet the needs of our children in our community to stop some of this violence that's going on. And then we have man up, where we have children and their fathers in the same room saying, listen, this is what a father, I mean, a child expects of a father, and a father expects of a child. So it's important. You know, I tried to give $3 million to the school to try to help out with the reading program and what have you. So, but I really appreciate you being here and speaking loudly and clear. And that's what it is all about. It's not about politics, it's about our children. At the end of the day, nothing we do in this city, nothing you do on the board that does not include children, zero. So thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Very excited to see you here, thank you for your service that you've given to the Birmingham City Schools. Yes, I think all of us are very familiar with your son, very bright student in Birmingham City Schools. I'm delighted to see the work of the school board wanting to work with the city. And so I think we hear you loud and clear. I believe all nine of us do provide some type of funding to each of our schools in our district through our discretionary. So we want to continue that, but of course, that's just not enough. So I look forward to our discussions next week, and I echo Mr. Hoyt in that, bring us that information so that it can be a very good and, you know, discussion.
And if you all think of anything in the meantime, email us so we can make sure we include all of that. But thank you, Pro Tim Alexander, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President Parker. I just have a question about the Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi, cellular Wi-Fi hotspots that registered Birmingham City Schools students are supposed to receive. Do you have any idea of the timing on when that is going to happen?
We're already starting to roll those out now.
Okay.
So that will be done over the next couple of weeks. Really, we're targeting that to be done starting next week. But we've already issued some of our Chromebooks, so we're on it.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up question to that. So let me understand, so if they receive a hotspot or Wi-Fi or whatever, does it depend on if there's a tower in that area, so it's going to work regardless?
What we did was, because we knew we had that disparity, we spent almost $10 million on the computers, then we realized we didn't have internet service for all of our students and staff. So the hotspots are singular items that the students can get to take home. Up to five units can go in on that hotspot at the same time. So if a parent has multiple children in the school systems, the second grader, the third grader, and the eighth grader can all be logged on at the same time.
Okay, great.
Those parents that have Spectrum or some of those other services, the state has a voucher as well to help satisfy some of that need or that burden throughout the state. So they have the option of doing both. But Birmingham invested additional $2.7 million just to make sure that we would be able to keep the connectivity and accessibility for all of our students.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
All right, I need to go here, and then I'll come back. Council Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President, for coming. It's very important, and the city has an important role in this. Just a quick story, when I was in high school at Ramsey, my chemistry class didn't have enough textbooks. We actually had to share textbooks for weeks. And so I told my mom, who was on the city council, I was like, hey, Mom, like, we need more textbooks. And within a couple of weeks, she was able to get it. So that just shows how big of a role that the city council can have. And I have a niece and nephew in the Birmingham public school system, so I see firsthand every day about what they need, and our kids are in so much need. Virtual tutoring, virtual programs. My father and I are partnering with UAB Core to do a virtual math program for fourth graders, actually, just to help them out, and I can talk about that with you more in the outside next month. And they were just saying the importance of making sure that we can bring those same services to our kids online. I think this discussion requires more than just one meeting. I think with the Budget and Finance Committee, maybe if you can bring a copy of your budget, and we can go through it line item by line item, and then you can show us, hey, we need this money right here in this line item. I know Council Hoyt asked you that, but I think it's a little bit different when you go through the book, line item by line item, compared to just having a list of needs that you need. So I'm thankful that you're here, and we do have to put our kids first.
And the budget is online, so if any of y'all want to see the budget, it's transparent, it's online, but I can get you a copy of your own if you'd like it.
Okay, Council Woods, and then we'll go, Council Abbott, we'll go back on this side here.
Thank you, President, and thank you, President, for coming. You know, really have a great appreciation for what you guys are doing, the task that you have in front of you guys, trying to educate kids during this pandemic virtually and having to make that adjustment on the fly. Definitely look forward to having really deeper conversation into, you know, what the needs are and how we can meet them. And do want to ask, what was the, what was your, I guess, drop-off in your budget or compared to FY '20 to this one?
Depending on the line item, so for example, from the state, if you connect the state funding that we're going to reduce, which is going to be a couple of million, the million from the city, we're at $3 million already.
Right.
Without ADM and the other things that we know we're going to realize, or the additional costs that we have to be able to deal with transitioning through the pandemic. But we started at $2.6 million, then we went to $1.6 million, or we took $1.6 million last year for the promise, and now we're taking the last million that we had left. And the million that we had went to security and instructional coaches in the classroom. That's as far as the million stretches.
Okay, well, like I said, I think everybody up here has a tremendous appreciation and desire to see our students succeed. And so, like I said, we're just going to really, over the next couple of weeks, really be getting deep into it. So once again, appreciate you being here this morning.
Thanks for even listening.
We'll have Councilor Abbott, and I know Council Hillier from what.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if the school system is involved with the census? And maybe when y'all deliver those Chromebooks, you don't hand them to the person until they've filled out their census form, you know, kind of trade.
Well, we're already doing the registration, and they get the Chromebooks once they've registered. So we kind of have that going and dangling that carrot. But to say that we couldn't do census rollout, of course, we're always willing to partner for that kind of thing.
It just seems to me that if, you know, if we're having trouble getting people to sign up, there was a rumor, there was a rumor out there for a while that you didn't get that check from the government unless you filled out the census, and I thought that was a great rumor. Turned out not to be true. But, you know, if people were, if they had to fill out the census in order to get something, they'll do it. And otherwise, you know, they seem to have a lackadaisical attitude towards the census, not thinking about the fact that it's going to cost us all, you know. So I just wondered if y'all were involved.
Yes, and if we're not, we can be, we'd love to partner to do that. That's a great opportunity for our children to be involved.
A captive audience, yes.
We'll circle back around. Council Hillier.
Thank you, Ms. President, and thank you for coming. We've talked many times over the last couple of years that I've been in office, and I've enjoyed working with all of the schools in my district. We've worked really hard to continue to make sure that we get the different programs we've got going there now. And I'm looking forward, the pandemic kind of threw us off, but I was excited about starting my aviation program, after-school programs that will be with the Flight Museum, to get our kids ready, starting from the sixth to the eighth grade and up. But the pandemic kind of threw that aside. We did put $150,000 over into that budget to get that rolling. And so we need to revisit to make sure that we get our kids ready for STEM and math and science. So when they get to those levels, they'll be able to handle that end of it. So I'm excited about that. And of course, the things that we've done at Jackson, Olin, Wollum, and Sherman, and all the areas around, and working with all our schools, Carver High School, the principal there has just been a jewel. So we're excited about working with the school system in the future and what we can make happen. And I think that the more that the school board and the council get together and talk, maybe if it could be once a quarter, every other quarter, just not when it's budget time, I think would help a lot, even though I don't wait on that, and I'm sure a lot of my colleagues don't either. You know, we should, we could really keep things moving.
Sure, we'd love to. And thank you all for your time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I've got one more, Council Williams.
Not so.
Sorry, Hunter, how are you?
I wanted to say congratulations, not only to you for being elected president, but also for permanently choosing Dr. Sullivan, and I think I'm.
Yeah, we did a same old.
I wanted to congratulate y'all on that, because I am very happy that we have somebody that has not only been a student in the Birmingham City School System, but also has risen up through the ranks. And I know that we have had, what, 11 superintendents in 22 years, I believe, or something to that nature, if I'm off a year or two.
I think you're correct.
And so I'm hoping that Dr. Sullivan, being a child of Birmingham, will also be a permanent fixture, which I think that kind of consistency is what's best for our students. You know, a lot of different things have been said, and I do think that what my colleague, Mr. Hillier, just said about having regular, be it quarterly or whatever, interval meetings would be very important to let us know how you guys are operating, what your needs are, where your successes are, and everything else. I think that there's been a little bit of a division between the two groups over the past however many decades, and I would love with this new leadership for that to change. One thing that I heard from almost all of my colleagues is to have some sort of, I think Mr. Hoyt said, tangible. But I want to expand on that, and I want to do so very publicly. I want to make sure that we know exactly where this funding is going. In my first year on this council, I asked where the funding was going. In my first year on this council, I asked where the funding was going. They said it was going to security, so they made us go into executive session, in which the school board brought an attorney to speak to me, because they were worried about what it was actually going to. At the end of the day, it was said that it was going to 16 security guards that were permanent employees of Birmingham City Schools. Well, those security guards had been employed by the city school system for over 20 years. So when we increased that funding and it was said to go to security, I obviously wondered why are we paying for something that had already been paid for for the past 20 years? All this, and all this point to say is, I want to make sure that we are extremely transparent on what our actual needs are. And I think that all nine of us want to work with our counterparts, all nine of you guys. But we have to make sure that, you know, if we just gave you guys a million dollars and it was, that's supposed to be spent on security for in-school operations, are those security guards working as our, as our schools are closed? Those are the kind of things that I have questions about. I believe something was said about capital improvements, which was not part of our contract. And so I just want to make sure that we have a real specific idea of what you guys need. And I think working together as a team and having constant dialogue will, will, will in effect answer those types of questions that we have, you know?
And also, as we talk together, Council Williams, there may be ideas that you all want to incorporate, and we can work together to figure those out. You know, let's not say that we can't fund it. What we need to do, it sounds like to me, is we need to sit down and carve out which pieces of the pie we're willing to help with.
Well, I've had lots of phone calls with lots of people, and some, you know, but there's a new day, there's a new day, there's a new day and new leadership. So I see a lot of hope for our kids and for the direction of Birmingham City Schools. So I'm looking very forward to not only working with you guys on this budget, but having some sort of consistent dialogue into where we are. I think that, you know, if there's, if there's anything more important, it's how are we educating our children, which is, you know, the tomorrow of Birmingham. So thank you for being here. I appreciate it. And congratulations to both of y'all.
Y'all have a wonderful day, and thank you so much for...
Thank you, thank you. All right, Council Hilliard?
All right.
You've got two presentations, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm extremely excited, and this is a great opportunity to do it. What I'd like to do is first, I'm gonna ask Alice Wesley, the Executive Director, to come up, and her team, as well as Pastor Clifton McLeven, to come up, along with Carla. I'm gonna let them speak first, and then I want Carla to speak. But before we do that, I want them to come up to the mic, and then I want to play, I want to call their video up right now, and then we'll let them talk after the video has been shown. Are we ready?
Youth Towers is an organization that helps young adults aged 19 to 27 be able to come from homelessness to self-empowerment ultimately. So what are you doing here today? I see you got sofas and frontage and television sets.
Well, I'll tell ya, our veterans and I, we spoke, because we were extra blessed.
Wow.
And we decided that we'd like to bless the young kids.
I'm an abandoned child myself, and I was raised by a veteran family. And I didn't have to go to the foster program, because his family took me in until I was old enough. And to know that these kids are foster children and knowing what that program is, and it is a wonderful program, but as these kids age out, they really don't have anything. And some of them don't have the support that they really truly need.
If you could see that these women are moving heavy, frontage are behind me, and they are really pushing hard, it is such a wonderful job that they do. This is what Birmingham is supposed to do.
We are just excited about the donations that we're receiving. We're excited about the support that we're receiving. And we just want to thank everybody that has been a part of successfully helping Youth Towers house and support. Right now, over 370 young people.
Well, we would love to have you in the city of Birmingham and in District Nine. We're so excited to have you here. We got a lot of great things to do, Carla. I'm so excited about the future and what's going to happen, and looking out for these foster kids and the kids that are aging out. That's a big need in our city.
However, Youth Towers says the need is increasing with COVID-19 and the economy. So if you feel moved to help, go to youthtowers.org. For more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Fantastic, we want to thank you for that. And I want you to come up and say a few words and get everybody the chance to state your name and your organization. I'm Pastor Clifton J. McMillan, Sr. I'm the president of Youth Towers. I want to thank you, Councilman Hilliard, as well as the city council, and also the mayor for being here today as well. We at Youth Towers have been delighted to be able to help these young adults to bring their lives back into a place where they can be productive citizens, regardless of what circumstances they come out of, regardless of race, class, sexuality, it doesn't matter. These are young people that we want to make a difference in their lives and help them to help themselves. We don't want to continue to have them dependent on everything and everyone. So we're helping them to help themselves, and I thank God for my Executive Director, Ms. Alice Westry, and for the team that we have as well. We do want to appeal to you the fact that, right now, when we did this, it was 373 in our continuum of care. We have over 43 organizations that help us to accomplish this task. We have 393 right now, and the numbers are continuing to increase. And so we're at a place now where we had to just stop for a moment and try to see whether or not we could get other resources and things to help with some of the other young people. We're gonna take them no matter what, don't get me wrong, but we recognize that things are, because of COVID-19 and the economic situation we're all dealing with, things are becoming more challenging for our young adults. And so we just want to not only thank you for the opportunity and privilege of being able to present what we're doing, but we also want to continue to expand what we're doing, so that our young people have an opportunity not only to have their lives changed for the better, but also, part of what we also want to do as well is we want to make sure these young people can be in their communities, so they don't have to be totally wrenched out of their familiar surroundings as they continue to grow and develop in their experience as well. So we thank you so very much, and we appreciate the time this morning. And at this time, I'll give you our Executive Director. She's the hardest-working woman, I believe, in this arena, Ms. Alice Westry. Thank you.
Thank you, President. I'd just like to thank the council, Council Hilliard and the mayor, and I'd just like to thank the organizations that work and support us. I'd like to thank Pro Tim, who is very familiar with Youth Towers. We not only work with young people in foster care, but we work with all young people in every environment that is at high risk. And the beautiful thing about it is that we do not do it alone. That's why we're here today with Carla, to where as people reach out to us, Carla reached out to us, and she knew that we had young people that were going into rapid rehousing. And in that rapid rehousing, young people start off with nothing. They start off with nothing to sleep on, nothing to sit on, and so therefore, God brought organizations together to where as those basic living needs can be met many times the things that we take for granted. We also work with young people that are younger than age 18 or 19, if we have parental consent, either from the Department of Human Resources or parental consent from a parent that they're still living with. And the beautiful thing about it is that even though those numbers are very high, 395, each and every one of them are not on the streets or homeless or living in abandoned buildings, many of them, we're helping them not to be homeless. We also do prevention. So we prefer doing prevention, but we're still there to help a young person to make sure that they do not fall through the cracks and be able to have the best quality of life. We believe that being housed is a right and not a privilege. So every young person has a right to be housed, and we'd like to thank you for this opportunity and for this time to just share this information, and you've got some information to look at, and we will continue this fight as we go through and past COVID-19 in order to make sure that our young people have the best possible quality of life possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, come on up, and I'm gonna let you speak, and then I'm gonna talk after you, so I can tell you.
This is hard for me.
Pull the mic from down.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I want to say thank you for everything. And I don't know if you guys realize it, but two years ago, you guys had a program, and it was very cold down here. And we had homeless veterans inside of some of your building, especially in Enslie. Our mayor said, get those people out of there. They're starting fires. They didn't realize they were starting fires. They were just trying to keep warm. Well, one of our veterans that we happened to help, and you helped, and you don't even know him. He had been homeless for 10 years with nothing, living from abandoned building to abandoned building. With the help of my organization, Forever and Always Patriots, we are building tiny homes for homeless veterans. We are stationed right now in, we have, our main office right now is in Dora, which is this side of Walker County, in the Jefferson County line, just a little bit. But our village will be built in Walker County. With us being able to help that veteran that you helped, we have worked with him and helped him get a job. We put him through trucking school, and he is giving back to people that he can give back to. We don't ask for any money back, we ask for them to help the next person along the line. We're looking at expanding down here in Birmingham, and John and I have talked extensively about that. We do have some options down here to put an office down here, and we're very excited about that. There's 350 homeless veterans that need homes. Right now, we have, with the help of Paul Taylor, God bless his heart, he cleared our land, he took half of our dirt off of our land. Right now, we have another half, 10 feet of dirt. That's a lot of dirt, guys. And it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of equipment. And he has blessed us to take that off, and we will start putting our septic tanks in. We've been through Alabama Power, and they're going to show us and tell us what we have to do. We pretty much know, because we've had enough meetings with them, and they're gonna help us put the lines on, the electric lines under water, underside. We're gonna have 10 homes on that property. We're looking at getting the land next to it. We will have a facility where we will teach them a trade. There'll be a woodworking shop, there'll be a shop for rebuilding small engines and car parts. We have talked with the VA Hospital. They're going to help us with funding for getting group therapy and individual therapy. I have beekeeping there with All Master Beekeeping. We have, the homes are gonna be transitional homes. So the side of each home will have a 10-foot run for their dogs, not tethered. We have a veterinarian that is helping us as well for getting the animals for our veterans in need. So that, it's a great, exciting program for all of that, okay? So we have a lot to offer.
Thank you, Carla. I want to say about Carla and her Forever and Always Patriots organization, we would love to have you in Birmingham. I love that village you all are doing. And teaming up with Youth Towers was the best thing ever. And I know, and if you all could have been there to see all of those young ladies get their entire house furnished from top to bottom with quality, quality stuff, sofas, TV sets, Carla's and them organization-funded, all of that. And they brought the truck up, they unloaded. I'm just, I'm just happy you allowed me to be a part of that. And I look forward to helping you expand in Birmingham with all my other colleagues, because all of our districts, even though it wasn't given out in my district, Councilwoman Smith, and it happened in your district, I've just been working with Carla on doing some things. We want to bring it to District Nine, and we look forward to that, and helping them get that type of stuff. And we want to thank you all for coming out this evening. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council, for indulging. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, we're gonna move now to the consent agenda.
We're gonna take pictures outside.
Okay. Okay, the consent agenda starts on page two. And we have items one, two, and three on consent. Skip over to page 17, and you have items four and five on consent. Page 18, we have items six and seven on consent. Page 23, item number eight is on consent. Page 24, item nine is on consent. Page 27, we have items 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page 28, items 13, 14, and 15 are on consent. Page 29, items 16 and 18 are on consent. And on page 30, there's been requests to withdraw items 20 and 21. That's items 20 and 21. And then we continue with the consent agenda with items 20 and 23. Page 31, we have items 24 and 25 on consent, and please note that your addendum items should be number 27. That's 27, not 41. And you should have it in front of you. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Real quick, two things. I'd like to put item 27 on the agenda, on the consent agenda, and withdraw item 19 totally. And, okay, Council...
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to actually take off item number one altogether.
Take it off consent?
Just take it off the...
Withdraw?
Withdraw it completely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one and 19 withdrawn, 27's on. Okay, Councilor Woods, we'll go this way. President Pro Tim?
I'm good.
Dr. McQuinn? Council Abbott, Council Hoyt, everybody good?
Yes, I wanted to ask one question regarding item 27 before we put it on consent. Exactly what are we planning on doing with this $10,000? And what, for all these events, you know, I'm, I'm a veteran. I've been going over the process, which questions may be taken in the name of Congress. And so what I want...
Is our bank one?
Counsel to do is to be very careful about what we spend money on, because we don't want to be perceived, when we've cut the school system out completely, we don't want to be perceived as spending money unnecessarily on things that maybe the public might say, well, you can't fund the schools, but you can have a party, you can have an event, you can have a band, you know? I mean, I just want us to be very, very, very careful about what we spend public money on when we're in such dire straits. You know, at the hearing yesterday, there were many people in the audience who did not seem to focus on the fact that we're looking at a $63 million deficit, or it's not even a deficit, it's just the money isn't expected to be there. You can't... You can't, you can't spend money you don't have. You know, we're not the federal government. So I just want the council, us, us ourselves, to be very careful about what we're spending money on, because appearance is everything. And I don't want people to think we're squandering money when we don't have money to do important things. So that's the reason I'm asking, you know, exactly what are we planning on spending money on for these events?
So a couple of these things do occur in my district. Now, I know that there's up to $10,000, but for example, for fishing, we do the, a fishing rodeo every year in Eastlake that hopefully will happen this upcoming summer, even though we had to cancel it this past summer because of the pandemic, obviously.
So we would be buying fish?
Yeah.
We'll be doing that.
Actually, we'd literally be buying fish.
Literally, we're just trying to get in a position to be able to go ahead and plan certain events as we're moving forward, not saying that we will even, we'll utilize them at our high school games, the UAB game. There's a lot of getting ready for, so we're just in anticipation, just trying to be, to work with certain entities, those, as we prepare to move forward. We want people to be out, fishing rodeo, that's a great attraction, you know, those are the type of things that we're looking to do for the community. We want to make sure we just have things in place.
And then there's, if there's, for the auto racing, if there's an opportunity to bring something to Barbers that ends up needing to be supported by the council, I would like auto racing to stay in there as well, so.
Okay, okay. I just, I just don't want us to be out partying our money away. But fish and bringing economic development, encouraging events to Birmingham, those sound like things the council should be doing. So thank you very much, and it can stay on consent.
I think that you and I are on the same page on that.
All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in public hearings or requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced.
Motion to approve is a minute.
Second.
All right, let's see. iPad should be working. Councilmember Hilliard is out, Councilmember Hoyt. You should be up.
You're good, okay.
No?
Oh, I got value. Is this valid?
All right, thank you, sir.
No, I've got none.
All right. Consent agenda passes. First item, Mr. Clark.
Okay, we should be going to item one, which has been requested to be withdrawn. Next should be, what, 15? Which is actually on page, no, not 15, 15 should have been on consent, I'm sorry. Item 17, which is on page 29, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $11,257.41 to execute a quitclaim deed to Avondale Turn LLC for the sale of property located at 3810 Sixth Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama 35222, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with Section 3 dash 1 dash 4C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. And I need you to see, pass it, A.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item itself?
No.
Second.
Okay, one second. Something's different.
Oh, I should poke second.
So we had Councilmember Abbott, or was it Smithman and Abbott?
I was the second. She was the first.
Gotcha. All right, item should be before you for vote. Item is before you.
Mr. President, could I ask a question, please? On this item, is this a redemption by the owner, the previous owner, the owner who didn't, I guess, keep the grass cut? Or is this an outright sale of property to a new owner? Does anybody know?
I don't know firsthand, but the resolution consists of a repurchase by a former owner.
Okay.
Good morning, Counselor Abbott. I don't know firsthand, but in reading the resolution, it references a repurchase by a former owner.
Okay, so they're trying to redeem, I assume they're trying to redeem it. And I, not being familiar with a quitclaim deed.
We would, the city would convey by quitclaim deed, because it's possible that we don't have a complete interest in the property, we're just conveying what we have.
Okay, so there could be other.
There could be other issues that we're not aware of, so we're just conveying the interest that we have.
That we have, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we're ready to vote.
All right, voting seat, Bill. Counselor, Member Hoyt. Yeah, this thing keep going out. Your screen locking up? Okay, thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
Okay. All right, the item passes. Next time?
All right, 19 is withdrawn, as well as 20 and 21. That takes us to 26, which is on page 31. A resolution setting a public hearing September 29, 2020 to consider adoption of the ordinance to amend the city of Birmingham zoning ordinance title one, general provisions filed by the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits, case number ZAC 2020-12. Motion, please.
Second.
All right, item is up for vote. All right, that vote should be up.
Okay, all right, the public hearing's set. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Some other things.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
There was a note I forgot, but I think the timing of it was perfect, because you all allowed the president of the school board, who I worked with for four years, to come before you and speak to your requests. I think a good point to start from is, I want to say, probably the last week and a half, everyone has acknowledged to each of you, and, Mr. President, this will be brief, maybe two, max three minutes. People have come before you and said the following. Dear Mayor, dear Council, I understand that this is hard times. I understand that you all are facing a $63 million budget deficit, and on the left side of their mouth, they say, I know things need to be cut. On the right side of their mouth, they say, don't cut me. I understand things have to be cut, don't cut me. Now, the last time I checked, when you go through this budget, there's a pain point for everybody. Everybody's shared in something of a loss when you have a $63 million budget shortfall. We had the opportunity to speak with many boards and agencies, their executive directors, their CEOs, their presidents, as well as their board chairperson and/or their vice chair. We spent an hour with the school system, including Ms. Hendricks, who just stood before One hour. There were two organizations who received good and bad news. Every other existing organization who's received money from the city's budget in the past only received bad. Birmingham Transit Authority, Birmingham City School System. Of course, you all are aware that the Birmingham Transit Authority received $21 million in carriage funding. Many of you all are also aware that the school system's funding comes from four categories: city's tax dollars, and 101 million of their $300 million budget. So they receive $101 million that you all don't pass, it goes directly to them from city's taxes. 101, 101 million. Check the books, public record. They receive money from the state based on their student head count. They receive federal funding. Then they receive capital expenditure funding. And what we've been giving on top of that, out of our general fund, is at the discretion of us, when there is a surplus and we got extra money to give, because we believe in our school system. There is no extra money this year. The contractual relationship we have with the school system is that $101 million we give from Avalorian property taxes. Mr. Williams, you spoke to the security. I am not comfortable this year recommending $1 million go to the school system for adults, because you would be exchanging $1 million for them in exchange for us furloughing more of our employees. Which one do you want to do? Because it's not going to children. In addition to that, the $2 million that you all support from the Birmingham Promise goes directly to children. I'm not here to pit the school system against you all, but I know politics when I see it. And I know politics when I smell it, especially after I spent an hour with you explaining the good news you have, which I still haven't shared with this body yet, so I'll end on that note. The capital expenditure dollars have made a significant increase based on the investments you all have approved. And it's gonna be 2.8 million this, 2.8 million dollars this year going directly to the school system. In the middle of a year where there's a $63 million budget shortfall, the city of Birmingham is still fortunate and blessed to bring in economic development deals, where our school system receives a direct benefit from. On top of the 101 million they get from the city, they're getting 2.8 million in capital expenditure dollars. So don't tell me about a million dollars, where a significant portion of it goes to adults who are security guards, who are securing buildings where children are not in, because that has nothing to do with children. I look forward to the continued discussion, but as this shirt says, the streets are talking. I'm gonna continue to share facts with you, not some narrative, because someone is mad because they can't receive what they've gotten when there's a $63 million budget shortfall. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Hold on, I know Counsel Williams, and we'll work our way this way and back down.
Who about it?
Do what now? I was just gonna make, I was just gonna make a request. Whatever day that we meet with the school board, if it fits in your schedule, thank you.
Mr. President.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Yeah, I'm good. I've looked at the budget, I'm depressed, so I'm good.
Okay, and we'll go Counsel Hoyt, then if there is anything else.
Well, I guess I could recede that if we had been included in the process, that the mayor has proposed us in this budget. You know, it takes both sides running this city. And we should have been at the table, and even now, you say you got information that you gonna share with us later. And, you know, we work not even 25 feet from each other. And obviously, you obviously don't care what we think, because you not include us in the And, you know, this council is being diminished every day. And, you mean, you all can sit here and you can accept it, and that's good, but I won't. Because I think if you make a decision about giving money or not giving money to the children, and we sit here and work every day, and you not had that conversation with us first, before you made these proposals, you don't have to. But in a democracy, you try to work and find common ground. But obviously, that hadn't taken place. But time will tell. But I just think that, again, and let me say this, Mr. President, and we asked, and I asked for that the other day, we still don't have a capital budget. So we still making decision or being asked to make decision, or being proposed to make decisions without being, that process being fully exposed. And so can you write and ask for the capital budget? Because all of this needs to come on the table right now. Okay? And so we can look at the totality of the capital budget as well as the operation budget. That's the process.
Yes, sir. We'll make that request on writing and make sure everybody.
Because it suggests piecemealing the budget. And where we are in this pandemic, it warrants our full attention to the financial condition of this city. And the fact that we don't have a financial advisor, and we allowing these folks to make these decisions that they have, they don't have the professional opinion, the professional credentials to make. And we're asked to make the same kind of decision, or to weigh in on something that has not gone through the proper channels in terms of what we need. We've always had a person to advise us financially. You know, are we getting the best deal? And that's not being adversarial, that's just bringing things to the forefront so we could really look at this budget holistically. I mean, that's our duty. I'm good.
All right. With that, we're gonna go to announcements, all the new.
Are we done?
Yes, sir. Counselor, Hilliard, you want to start us off, or are you?
Yes, sir.
Or you need a moment, you want us to go?
No, no, no.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm ready, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Okay, tonight, 7:30 PM, our weekly viral town hall meeting. You can call in to 508-924-1349. We would love to have you call in tonight and participate. We're gonna have an exciting speaker. I think some of you heard earlier, we'll have someone on from the census, as well as some other things we'll cover. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sir, Dr. O'Quinn, you want to go? We'll just, yeah, we'll just kind of go up and around. You get, okay, Counsel Hoyt, Counsel Abbott, y'all, announcements ready?
Oh, let me.
I do.
Counsel, you want to go? Oh, you ready, Counsel Hoyt?
No, I would, would yield to the lady from District 2, 3.
Counsel Abbott, you want to?
He doesn't even know where I am. I'm really hurt. I want to wish everybody a pleasant and relaxing Labor Day. Cook out your pork butt and your ribs, and enjoy yourselves. It's hard to find pleasure in these days that we're living in, so I hope everyone enjoys their Labor Day. The next Budget and Finance meeting is going to be Monday, September 14, at 3:30 PM. The deadline for submissions has been extended by a few hours due to that Labor Day weekend. The deadline is Wednesday, September 9, by 5:00 PM. And everyone should send their completed submissions in, so that we have good documentation. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Hoyt.
All right, Counsel Hoyt? Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, thank you. The Thomas Naval Association meets at Mount Hebron this evening at six-thirty. And of course, I think that's it. Yep.
Okay. Counselor Woods?
Yeah, it's just a couple of things. One, the federal government kind of provided some funding and some things to allow us to have a couple mega testing sites in the area. And so, one of those sites was on the Centerpoint Parkway at Cathedral Lacrosse Christian Church, and had the opportunity to go out and tour that site with Dr. Hicks of Jefferson County Department of Health, and I think PIO has a video already on that. And really, that goes till Friday, that's, they started last Monday, goes through Friday, eight to five each day, and so you can pull up, you can pre-register, and definitely encourage anyone that feels sick to get checked out. If you just want peace of mind, go ahead and get checked out. Let's continue working to flatten the curve. Also, while they get the video ready, want to congratulate Huffman High School Vikings Football Team on a two-and-oh start and a big win over Parker High School this week, so... Hey, everybody, Counselor Clinton Woods. I'm here at Cathedral Lacrosse Church on Centerpoint Parkway, and this is the site of one of our new mega testing sites. The first guy here is asking, "Do you have a voucher? Did you enroll online?" A lot of people have been touched by people that have either contracted the virus, that have been hospitalized, and unfortunately, in some cases, even been connected to people that have died. And so, you know, our heart goes out, we have a lot of just compassion, and we just need to continue to work together to get through that.
For these, you put on your windshield. If you put on a windshield, for safety, we can't very much window out.
Continue doing what you're doing, you know, we're going in the right direction, but you've got to continue wearing masks, continue social distancing, continue doing the things that are going to get us out of, over the hump on this. And so, we're excited about the progress, but we can't stop, continue getting checked, and, you know, we continue working together, we can get through this. And so, I want to just extend, you know, invitation, if this is available for everybody, and so if you feel the need to get tested, go ahead and get tested. If you have questions, concerns, reach out to me, but it's a very smooth process. You pre-register online, you come through, they have a shorter swab kit, and you self-swab yourself, and they'll take it from there. And so, we're excited to have that here on the eastern side of town, and we want to see those numbers continue to go down.
For more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Smith?
I just want to remind everybody to be safe this Labor Day weekend. I encourage everybody to celebrate safely, no celebration with guns, fireworks are still illegal. I'm just praying that we just have a safe weekend. I don't want to see the crime numbers go up any more than what they have lately. And also, just to remind people in District Six that we have a couple of testing sites for this week and next week. So, today, at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church, you can still call for an appointment. It's from eight to two today, so the number is two oh five, nine seven five, two eight one nine. And Greater Shallow and Sixth Avenue Baptist Church will both continue to have testing for the next few weeks. I know Greater Shallow also helps out District Seven as well. Thank you, President Parker.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a few announcements. I do want to thank everyone, including especially city services, for participating in the District Seven cleanup on Saturday. We will resume part two of that. We did have some problems with the weather, but I'm very thankful to those volunteers that came out. When we talk about service, and we heard from our school board president today, I was very excited to see the members of the Lady Dragons, the Winona High School basketball team, they were out in the weather, and they came out and helped us. So, we'll have part two, that will be Saturday, September twelfth. Will begin again at Wiggins Park, and we'll go further into the district. I know there were some comments about how far we went on this particular cleanup, but we have to start somewhere. And so, I encourage you, anyone that's in the sound of my voice, you live in the district, you care about the cleanliness of the district, you want to see the district look better, I ask you to help us and help this office to do what we can to clean up our district. I do also want to again thank the school board president for coming, and in lieu of them having a representative on the school board at this time for District Seven, I do want to announce that their child nutrition program will offer forty-two sites for meal distribution to all remote scholars on school days. Those meal services we provide it daily via curbside and walk-up, and that'll be from eleven AM to twelve forty-five. So, parents, if you'll please, be sure to log in onto your Birmingham City Schools website so you can see these distribution sites and times. And that's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Right before we leave, just wanted to make the note about the situation that happened up in Wisconsin with Jacob Blake and the movement you're seeing around the country with what the NBA players and what the other sports leagues are doing, and also other groups across with the, with the march this past weekend with Reverend Sharpton and all. Things have to change. And I just simply want to say, so we want Mr. Blake, speedy recovery, all those others that have been, you know, harmed by the injustices out here. Things just have to change. And also, with what the University of Alabama Code Saving, what they did on yesterday, I think it lets everyone know that change is coming, and we just, things just have to change sooner rather than later with that, so...
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Counselor.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I want to say I was extremely impressed with what the UAB and some of the others have done, and touring the Civil Rights Institute, and given a real history, a real history on what's happening in our community. I think, President Parker, you are definitely on point about the young man that's shot and paralyzed. We continuously see these type of things happen on a regular basis. I am glad to join with my colleagues and say that we are one-hundred percent in support of black lives, matters of fact, the things that they are pushing in terms of black on all this crime that's affecting us, each and every one of us, and the things that are affecting our community. We need help, we need help, and we need help now, not yesterday or the day before. But thank you, Mr. President, for bringing those issues forward, and I support you in that, and hopefully that we'll do another dedication to the young man that, from the movie Wakanda, you know, I mean, I saw it twice. I'm still just blown away, but I do want to say to my African-American brothers that it is very important for us to get checked on a regular basis, because it's a silent killer, and a lot of times, we don't have that. And I want to thank my sisters for speaking up and encouraging more of us black men to go and get our physicals and get our checks and that type of thing. And I don't want to leave out others, because we want all wives, regardless of your color, to encourage men, especially black men, to go out and be checked. I get checked regularly, but it can come now, it's coming early. You don't have to be fifty to get it. So, I, you know, I know they say in your fifties, but I say go in your late thirties. Start checking earlier. My cousin didn't even know he had it, and he was in his thirties, thinking he was like thirty-eight. His job just required him to be checked, and when they checked him, they found out he was in his first stage of that type of cancer. So, I want each and every one of us to be vigilant, and no longer do we need to not go and get checked out. Black men, it's time for you to go and get checked out and get checked on, because this is a curable cancer. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, okay, Council Hoyt, you going to close us out?
Yes, just wanted to mention that you all know, several weeks ago, I raised the issue of the lack of diversity with the Alabama Sports Hall of Fame, and met with Edgar Weldon, the chairman of that board, and had a very cordial meeting, and they have since, he, we had a good meeting, and he said that he would work on trying to make some change. He said it wouldn't happen immediately, but they were working on it. Well, I want you to know, thanks to Mr. John Packey, works for Channel thirteen news, who thought this story was worthy of reporting, reached out to the governor's office, and the governor has now made an appointment of Mr. Edgar Pruitt, who is from Pickens County, I think Allensville or somewhere down there, which is fine. This is a start, and I'm not satisfied, but it is a start. And so, I want to say kudos to Edgar and his board, but we need some more diversity on that, on that board. But I really appreciate the governor stepping up, as well as Edgar stepping up. And let me thank publicly Mr. John, I mean, Mr. Reginald McDaniel, Attorney Reginald McDaniel, who first brought this issue to me. And from that, went to Roy Johnson, who wrote the story, but I just want to give folks kudos, you know, give you flowers while you're here. But I want to say, John, thank you, and thank you, the thirteen team, for bringing this to helping us to get this message out, and it has made a difference. So, I really appreciate that, and thank my colleagues.
We thank you, Council. Thank you.
Yeah, bless you.
All right, with that, there's a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, be safe.
Yes, ma'am.